City Clerk Norris, would you call the roll?
Mayor McClellan.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Whitehead.
Here.
Councilmember Edgar.
Here.
Councilmember Radner.
Here.
Councilmember Crawford.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum, thank you. Before we approve the agenda, please add item 9A5, a proposal approval for the Event Hub, and postpone item 5K on the consent agenda. So thus amended, is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Consent agenda. These are routine items presented without discussion as one agenda item. Should any member wish to discuss or disapprove any item, it must be dropped from the blanket motion and considered separately. A. Regular city council meeting minutes for May 19th, 2025. B. Approval of the Southeastern Oakland County Public Works Association, SOCPWA mutual aid agreement. C. Request to approve payment application number five for the 2024 block pruning project to Limbwalkers Tree &amp; Snow Limited of Kenaki, Michigan in the amount of $12,825. D. Approval of pay application number three and change order number three for the 2024-25 miscellaneous concrete project, everyone's favorite. M-773 to Mattioli Cement Company of Fenton, Michigan in the amounts of $341,097.89 and a plus of $42,881.56. E. Payment of invoices from OHM Advisors for engineering consulting services for the total amount of $8,845. F. Third quarter fiscal year 2024-25 investment report. G. Budget to actual report for period ending 3/31/25. H. Library board meeting minutes for March 18th, 2025 and April 15th. I. Beautification Advisory Commission meeting minutes for September 17th. J. Recycling Commission meeting minutes for August 15th, September 19th, October 17th, November 21st, December 21st, January 16th, February 20th, and March 20th. We are skipping KL, new and renewal of licenses for June 4th, 2025. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those...
Mayor McClellan?
Question?
Yeah, I just wondered if...
It's not too late to ask if we can take item D off for further discussion.
Item D, wait a minute. Mattioli. Okay, let's remove item D and approve the others. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Now let's look at item D. Approval of pay application number three and change order number three for the 2024-25 miscellaneous concrete project, M-773, to Mattioli Cement Company of Fenton, Michigan in the amounts of $341,097.89 and a credit of $42,881.56. Is there a motion to approve item D?
So moved.
Second.
Second, okay. Discussion, Mayor, Member Edgar.
I just want to care to come up. Could you just explain what the change order is about? How much extra work they're doing, what they're doing?
Well, we did have a positive change order on this project earlier in which we added about $27,000. Oh, I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry. It was like 200-something thousand dollars to the project to bring it back up to a... to bring it back up to the amount that was originally budgeted when we were able to obtain extra money. This change order simply takes those amounts and brings them to zero by balancing the project. Anything original bid quantity is added to the increased quantity or original bid quantity is subtracted from the decreased bid quantity. And those totals are then added together and subtracted from each other.
That's confusing. So are there any new miscellaneous concrete projects that go along with this? Or this was just... This is...
This is the end of this 24-25 project and we will be bidding out the next 25-26 project in the new fiscal year.
So did we do more this year than last year?
No, we did not. The 23-24 project budget was nearly a million dollars. This one was somewhere around 710,000.
And what about next year, 25-26? Are we going to do more of the concrete work? Concrete repair?
We have talked to finance about any time there is extra road money to put that budget into the miscellaneous concrete. So we do have some additional funds after we received a state earmark funding of $2 million. So we will be trying to increase that amount. Depending on where the bids come in, we may or may not have to change those quantities.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions?
Madam Mayor, just one question.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem Whitehead.
Thank you. On section 33 in our packet, I don't see any like blue or green dots. Does that mean we're doing the entire area or...?
No, it's blank because we had no work planned, but we wanted to show it for completeness.
Okay.
So that it was clear.
And just, yes. City Manager Eric Tungate.
Right, so Councilmember, I'm looking at our newly approved budget. So it looks like we have $550,000 budgeted for next year for miscellaneous concrete. Right now...
So less.
So less, but to Kara's point, as funds become available, we shift them. We really like this program because it allows us to really specifically target areas that are problem areas for certain neighborhoods and things. So as we get down the road in next year's budget beginning July 1st, of course, we'll look for opportunities to do that.
So it looks really good.
Excellent.
Much needed.
Yes. Are we ready to vote then? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We have finished the consent agenda. Brings us to recognition of visiting elected officials. I don't see anyone. Special presentations. We have, I believe, Deb Oshewski from Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense. Is Deb here? Ah ha. Would you like to come up and introduce yourself and...
Madam Mayor, I think I might be the only person on the dais that doesn't have orange on.
Orange.
I'm sorry.
Put the ribbon on.
Not any longer, here we go.
Oh, there you go. Bingo.
Mayor McClellan and the council, thank you so much for inviting us here this year. We really appreciate it. We appreciate your support year after year for this important endeavor. I am Deborah Oshewski from Moms Demand Action for Gunsense in America. Here with my friend Diana Darland. And we want to thank you for the proclamation once more this year. We would like to let everyone know that there is some reason for optimism. Michigan did a really good job in 2024 passing laws that would help gun sense initiatives, really. One of the most important ones being the safe storage law, which makes it illegal to have weapons that are unloaded and unlocked in premises where children live or might be, even if they're just visiting. There's significant fines for instances when a child gets hold of a gun or even hurts someone with it. So we think that's a big deal. We also, they passed laws regarding universal background checks, extreme risk protection orders, which is really good. They're called the red flag laws when people should not have guns that we can have the police assist us to take them out of their hands for a period. And domestic violence firearm ban is also important. They also passed the Safe Homes, Safe Schools bill, which requires schools to provide parents with information about gun safety. This has happened because of the advocates that work on these things up in Lansing over and over again with hearings and keeping the pressure on with public support, which we know is big for some sort of safe gun laws and with our continued support. Another program we want to highlight is the Be Smart Program for Kids. This is a presentation that people can get online or they can invite a presenter to come to their small group and give it. Talks about how important it is to keep guns safely stored in their home.
Repeat the name of the program?
It's called Be Smart for Kids.
Be Smart for Kids.
Yep, you have a little flyer on it. And we had helped us post a board in the lobby, which has information for everyone. If anyone, any member, a parent or a church leader or school leader wanted to contact besmartforkids.org. Yes, we would arrange to have a presentation given for their group or they could just do it online, because we do it online periodically. It does things that I, for instance, never thought of even as a parent. When your child goes to another kid's house to play, to ask, you know, gosh, you know, do they have any allergies? Do we have any dogs to worry about? Are your guns locked up? Because we just want to make sure that nobody's got access to things they shouldn't have access to. So we thank you so much for this proclamation.
Keep fighting.
Thank you.
It took women a long time of lobbying to get the vote.
Yes.
And this is going to be a long haul too. Stick with it.
No kidding, yeah.
So we have a proclamation. Proclamation declares the first Friday in June, National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of Oak Park to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence and to declare that we as a country must do more to reduce gun violence. Whereas every day, the facts are stunning. More than 125 Americans are killed by gun violence alongside more than 260 who are shot and wounded. And on average, there are 19,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas Americans are 26 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. And whereas Michigan has 1,421 gun deaths every year with a rate of 14.2 deaths per 100,000 people, a crisis that costs the state $16.8 billion each year, of which 380.5 million is paid by taxpayers. Michigan has the 27th highest rate of gun deaths in the United States. And whereas gun homicides and assaults are concentrated in cities with more than half of all firearm-related gun deaths in the nation occurring in 42 cities. And whereas cities across the nation, including Oak Park, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions. And whereas protecting public safety in the communities they serve is mayor's highest responsibility. And whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. And whereas mayors and law enforcement officers know their communities best, are most familiar with the local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. And whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever as we see gun violence continue to impact communities across the country. And whereas in January 13th, Hadiah Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15. And on June 3rd, 2022, to recognize her 26th birthday, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to Hadiah and other victims of gun violence and the loved ones of those victims. Whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hadiah's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wore orange to announce themselves to other hunters, went out in the woods. And orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 6th, first Friday in June, to help raise awareness about gun violence. And whereas by wearing orange on June 7th, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of victims and survivors. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the hands of people who should not have access, encourage responsible gun ownership, and keep our communities safe. Now therefore be it resolved that City Council of the city of Oak Park, Michigan, proclaims June 6th, 2025 to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day and encourages all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor human lives. And then our clerk has notarized it and we can present it to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Thank you so much. Yes, photo op in orange. Okay, item 7B, a special retirement recognition for Lieutenant Ryan Bolton. City Clerk? Nope. City Manager, Eric Tungate.
Ryan, sir.
Yeah, there's too many of these. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. I'm going to read this special recognition for Lieutenant Bolton, who is a jewel of Oak Park. The mayor, council, and administration of the city of Oak Park, Michigan, in testament and tribute to his distinguished public service and lasting contributions to the city of Oak Park and its residents, wish to express their sincere appreciation to Ryan Bolton. You have served as a pillar of integrity in this organization and have helped to set the city's high standard of excellence. You have served as a source of guidance, support, and leadership for your colleagues. And it is those qualities that will leave a lasting imprint on the city of Oak Park. Your dedicated spirit, wealth of knowledge, and overall dedication to the city of Oak Park will be sorely missed. Signed, Marion McClellan, Mayor, Eric Tungate, City Manager. Lieutenant Bolton, thank you. He's not here tonight, but I hope he's watching. I just want to personally thank him for his service. It is not going to be the same without him around here. He's a gem. And it's, it hurts my heart to see him go, but I'm happy for him in his next chapter. Director Cooper, take it away.
All right, thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, and City Manager, Tungate. Again, like I said, Lieutenant Bolton is not able to be here. He's actually out of state in Tennessee. Wanted to be here but was unable to. So with that being said, just a little bit on Lieutenant Bolton. He officially retires from the city of Oak Park on Friday, June 13th, after 26 years of honorable service as a public safety officer. He's a highly decorated officer who has received numerous citations and award during his distinguished career. Lieutenant Bolton has held many positions throughout the city of Oak Park as far as the public safety department during his career. He began as a public safety officer and very soon thereafter served as a field training officer. He was promoted to the rank of detective, where he served several years in the Investigations Bureau, working on some of the most difficult and heinous cases that the department has had the challenge of investigating. After serving in the Investigations Bureau, he was promoted to the rank of patrol sergeant. Lieutenant Bolton was also a range instructor for many years for the department. And then while serving as a patrol sergeant, he was also co-commander of the Field Training Officer Program. Lieutenant Bolton was a member of our special response team for many years. And he also is a graduate of the prestigious Northwestern Leadership School of Staff and Command. Lieutenant Bolton is currently serving in the Investigations Bureau as a commanding officer. And also, he has served as the secretary slash treasurer for the Oak Park Police Officers Command Union. The contributions he's made with his dedication and hard work to the Oak Park Public Safety Department is greatly appreciated. Wish him well in his retirement and ask that God continues to bless him and keep him as he starts the next chapter of his life. So I'll make sure that we pass along this plaque and give this regard. So thank you on behalf of Lieutenant Bolton.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you. Okay, item eight, special licenses. 8A, request for special event license and waiver of application fee submitted by the Oak Park Corridor Improvement Authority for the Oak Park Cruise &amp; Groove to be held in the 11 Mile Water Tower Social District on August 14th, 2025, from 6:00 to 9:00. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? It's a great event. Please come out. And there's music and cars and community. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item 8B, request for special events license and waiver of application fee submitted by the Oak Park Corridor Improvement Authority for Oktoberfest event to be held in the Water Tower Social District, October 4th, from 4:00 to 9:00. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. City Manager Eric Tungate.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. For 9A1, resolution supporting the local road improvement matching fund program for the Capitol Ave rehabilitation project, I would like to ask City Engineer Kara Grissimer to join me at the podium. Good evening, again.
Good evening again. City Manager, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Council. We have before you a, the resolution supporting the local road improvement matching fund program for the Capitol Ave rehabilitation project. Oakland County Board of Commissioners approved the city's application for funding under the 2025 Local Road Improvement Program, or LRIP. Poor conditions on our road create an impediment to the economic development of our community and diminish the excellent quality of life our residents expect. The program was created to provide matching funds to assist municipalities in targeting road maintenance and/or capital improvement projects on roadways. The city of Oak Park applied for these funds as part, to use as part of the Capitol Ave rehabilitation project, M-786, between Coolidge Highway and Rosewood Avenue. This project will consist of full-depth concrete replacement in the failed concrete pavement areas. As part of the grant, the city of Oak Park agrees to fund non-eligible costs such as administrative, coordination, permit fees, preliminary engineering, right-of-way acquisition, and construction engineering services related to the improvements on the Capitol Ave rehabilitation project. This program will provide reimbursement funds in the amount of $68,645. It is recommended that you approve the attached resolution in support of the LRIP matching fund program for Capitol Ave rehabilitation project. And we also recommend that you authorize the City Manager, Tungate, to sign the resolution and accept the matching funds on behalf of the city.
Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion or questions? Roll call, vote please.
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Whitehead?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Okay, 9A2, I'm going to have CIA Director Michelle Bishop join me at the podium for a mural approval for 8601 West Nine Mile, Shears Ace Hardware. Very excited to see this one.
Oh my. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Council, and City Manager, Tungate. We, the Corridor Improvement Authority, had a request from one of our businesses to do a mural, Shears Ace, which is at 8601 West Nine Mile. This has been percolating for a while, so we're happy to see it come to fruition. They're going to put a mural approximately 25 by 16. It's going to be on the east side of the building. And I think we have a picture somewhere. So they're paying basically tribute to Oak Park. And they've been here a very, very long time, as we all know. And it's a generational business. So it was very important to them to include, you know, bits and pieces of Oak Park that the owners remember and that everybody in the community likes, like our train and obviously the oak trees. And if you see, there's like a little heart and it says Ace plus OP, you know, in the tree. So the artist, her name is Wendy... Oh goodness, I am blinking on the last name right now. Popco, yeah. And she has done, if her resume is in your packet, she has done dozens and dozens of murals around metro Detroit. So this mural has been approved by the mural review board, which makes up the mayor, our economic development director, and our local artist, Robert Murek. And then the Corridor Improvement Authority also approved it because they are applying for a facade grant, which we'll go on to in the second notation on the agenda. So, but yeah, we're super excited. And this is project one of two. They're going to do a later project on the front of their space later this year.
So you need a vote?
We just, yep, we need you to vote that it's okay and it passes. It is passed every single, you know, it's checked everything. We just need your say so.
A motion to approve this mural.
I'll make the motion, Madam Mayor.
Second. I just had to say, our PR department couldn't come up with a better mural for the city of Oak Park. This is like hog heaven. And this, she was a phenomenal artist with an amazing track record. It just, how did Shears know about her?
I had provided them with a list of all the artists that had submitted designs for the library, just so we had a list to start with. Because most of these businesses have no idea where to go. But Wendy was a friend of a friend and so Brian and Paul, who are the owners, you know, they knew about her and so they just started working with her.
Lovely, wow. It's a great mural. And it's, people coming from Ferndale, it's the first thing they see. Welcome to Oak Park. It is the best. So we're thrilled. All we need is...
It has the train. I just want to, I would be remiss if I didn't. About 10 years ago, when we used to talk about Nine Mile, we could have never, it was before Looney Park, before any of this. So if you're just now finding out about Nine Mile in Oak Park, it's almost too late because there's so much going on. These kinds of little projects, you know, we dreamed of having, as you know, the first council, we didn't allow murals. So we dreamed of this. And so now we're hitting this in full stride. So I'm very excited about this. I think it just adds to the flavor on Nine Mile and continues to make it a vibrant corridor for our city.
Amazing. Do we need a...
We need to vote.
A vote.
Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Whitehead?
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Passes unanimously, and we're hoping that Saturday they're going to be making slime again?
Actually, they're doing rock painting, and they will have inflatables in their parking.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Nine A three, Michelle.
So, in addition to the mural, one of the things that the Corridor Improvement Authority will help with is with our facade grant. So, Shears Ace has applied for the facade grant for, we, we do a matching grant up to five thousand dollars. It's a fifty percent match. Their mural's going to cost ten thousand dollars, so they have applied for a facade grant for five thousand dollars, and the CIA Board has approved that, and they just need your approval.
Yes. So, we need a motion to approve this facade grant?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Whitehead?
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
They are passed, and we're delighted with them.
Okay, nine A four, Michelle, please.
So, this is our tenth and final facade grant for this fiscal year. This one is from Janaye Watt over at Give Me Chocolate, which is at two-two-one-three-three Coolidge Highway. Her business is all about chocolate, so if you haven't been in there, definitely check it out. She is applying for a facade grant, they're going to repaint the building, and they're going to do new landscaping in front. She applied for the facade grant for twenty-three hundred, forty-one dollars and twenty-four cents. The CIA Board has approved it, and they just need your approval.
Okay. We need a motion to approve this facade grant?
So moved.
Second.
Second, thank you. Is there water for the plantings, or do they have to...
She'll do it.
She's going to want it?
Yeah, she's going to do it, but she's also looking at plants, she's still deciding, you know, she's got a couple different options, but she's looking at more drought-resistant plants, so that, you know, she understands that she needs to take care of it, and there's upkeep.
Okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Radner?
Yep.
Mayor Protem Whitehead?
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Okay, nine A five, we have our city engineer, she's back again. There she is, Kara Grissom, or take it away, please.
All right. We are requesting to approve the proposal from Testing Engineers and Consultants, TEC of Troy, Michigan, to provide construction testing for the Event Hub construction for the not-to-exceed amount of twenty-six thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty cents.
Is that, is that this?
So moved.
No, it's, it's number added to nine A five.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion, ah, ah, ah. So, discussion or questions? Testing is awfully expensive, yes?
This is an overestimate. I wouldn't expect to actually get close to this amount, but it is something that, you know, yes, it is expensive, steel inspection is involved, and those people earn more than the people that are just testing soils usually.
I don't know what this is, because it's engineering, and I don't understand that, but if you're telling me it's important, it's important.
It's our quality control for the construction.
Sure, yeah, that.
And isn't it required by the state?
There are certain things that are required, they're also required by our architectural plans for the Event Hub.
It's required.
Thank you. We are ready to vote.
Mayor Protem Whitehead?
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
And Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Okay, we have nine B one, resolution to authorize budget amendment 2025. Dashboard, we have our esteemed colleague from the finest department, finest director, Sandra Crawford, is here. Sandra.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council, City Manager Tungate. Before you, item number nine B one is a resolution to authorize, and this is a typo, it should be budget amendment number three, and the, another correction should be, the net change in fund balance should be budget amendment number two, that had a zero effect. And so this amendment, number three, the, has no net impact on fund balance and includes the following notable items. Increase in licenses and permits are adjusted for actual results that came out better than we had anticipated. Increase in property tax administrative fees for the actuals for the billings to date. The expenditure increase for IT computer subscription costs were greater than anticipated. And then the, we reduced the transfer in revenue from public improvement fund due to no administrative fees were received. For the special grant, excuse me, for the special revenues fund, we increased in grant revenue for the library and related expenditures per the library board recommendations. And then for the capital projects funds, we adjusted the administrative fees to zero due to no tax reversion purchases, and we reduced the related transfers to the general fund. Increase in grant revenue for the Eleven Mile Parking Fund for the park grant received. And for the enterprise fund, the water and sewer fund includes rollover budgets from the fiscal year of twenty-three, twenty-four that were not spent on the capital-related items. The overall net of these amendments will allow purchase of the capital items that are budgeted. So, this proposed budget amendment has no impact on the fund balance of the general fund, and it keeps the estimated fund balance at approximately seventeen percent of the annual expenditures. The amendments to all other funds keeps the fund balance targeted at ranges are done in compliance with the state of Michigan requirements and guidelines. So, the recommended action is approval of resolution to authorize budget amendment number three, and to adopt the resolution for the budget amendment number three as well.
Okay, we need a motion to approve the resolution to authorize this budget amendment 2025 dash three.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call, vote please.
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Whitehead?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. Nine B two, I'm going to take, councilmembers, you received a copy of our Standard and Poor's Global Ratings Report. Unfortunately, we did not get the double A minus rating that I have tried to get so hard for so long. But that's just on this most recent bond issue, and this morning, we sold ten million dollars in bonds for our Community Center project. Yeah. Fellow government nerd-dom.
Start with the bad news, huh?
The good news on the sale of those bonds, as I have it right here in front of me, we got, our true interest cost was four point seven percent, and we expected it to be a little higher than that. We had estimated it to be five percent, we thought it'd be more around four point seven five, but four point seven one percent. So, we did a little bit better than we thought on the ten million dollars. And again, as a reminder, we're going to be issuing ten million dollars of the total forty-plus million right now for the pre-development work and some of the demolition work, and then the remaining part of that, this is for the Community Center, will be issuing at a later point. And it's on that second issue of debt that we may be able to get a better rating. But with a seventeen-plus percent fund balance and all of the things that we have going on, and communities around us that have a double A rating, and we don't, I'm a little jealous, I'm a little chapped about this whole thing, to be honest with you.
We're getting there.
We'll get there, but I want everyone to know, and especially the public to know, we are an A-plus, stable-rated community, so we're very proud of that.
Knowing that in 2011, we were on the watch list for a state financial manager.
Right, and I think it goes without saying, but the fact that we were able to sell all ten million dollars of bonds today, in the private open market today, says a lot about the confidence that other financial institutions have in our city. If I had come to you tonight and said we weren't able to sell it, we'd be in trouble. But we were. So, people believe in us, they believe in what we're doing, they believe in our financial statements, they believe in our fund balance and everything else that we're holding steady to. So, I'm very proud of that, I'm very proud of our finance department and their hard work on all of this. This, this all seems so easy, but just to get your ratings report is countless meetings and calls and so forth, so hard work goes into that, so thank you. Okay, nine C one, I'm going to have Deputy City Manager of Municipal Services and Public Works, Dave DeCosta, the longest title in the city, come to the podium, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council, and City Manager Tungate. Before you tonight is the final award to our construction manager for the Event Hub project, Frank Riewald and Sons. At our last two meetings, we awarded various scopes to that project. Tonight, we are prepared to award the final professional services contract to Frank Riewald. That includes their previously awarded Construction Management Staffing Fund, but now we are looking for a final project GMP that includes a two-point-eight percent general manager fee, point-five percent insurance fee, and a one-point-one percent PLM bond fee. These are all fees that are structured in the Oakland County Pre-Bid Project. As you may have seen, the Event Hub has started, so we are in full, full speed starting ahead with that. We have worked successfully with the Frank Riewald team many times in the past and are very comfortable with their work. So, tonight, I'm asking for approval on the, the final professional services contract and final GMP for the Event Hub project in a total amount of nine million, four hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars. Funding is available in the Parks and Recreation Improvement Fund, and I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
First, a motion to award the contract.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Are there questions for the director? Well, first, from City Manager Tungate.
I just wanted to add, so Dave kind of touched on this, but I, councilmembers, I want to just add that, so Frank Riewald and Sons built the building we're sitting in right now, and this has happened while Dave and I have both been here. They built this building a million dollars under budget, so we're very comfortable with them, they're a great firm, they work with many municipal organizations. I'm actually thrilled that they're going to be partnering with us on this, too. As Dave said, I mean, it's at least ten years in the making, talking about the site next door here, and to see bulldozers, I was like giddy today, walking around, because I'm that excited about it.
And they know we're expecting them to come in at least five percent under budget.
They have no choice. So, you know, and I do think it's worth noting that Dave is organizing weekly meetings, project meetings, that are going to include the general contractor, our staff, et cetera, so that we make sure, and project budgets, so that we make sure, just like with the building we're sitting in, which is exactly what we did, that we don't have any cost overruns, and we're finding efficiencies all the way throughout it, so that we don't put our taxpayers in a dire situation where it's going to be over budget. We don't want that to happen. We want to deliver a great product, on time, and hopefully under budget, or at least on budget. So, wanted to add that.
Okay, now, so we have, we have a motion? Yes. Discussion or questions? Hard to believe that we're right there with shovels ready.
We're ready.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Whitehead?
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously. Elevate Oak Park?
Okay, so, you know, a lot of the Elevate Oak Park stuff, we've talked about, you know, I think it, it goes without saying, especially for a lot of our residents who see all throughout the city, especially when you combine it with the six ninety-six project, there is just so much construction going on, and there's more to come. The Eleven Mile Parking Lot Reconstruction Project will start later this summer. We'll begin pre-construction on the Community Center project, which will be by far the largest project. There's just a lot going on. But Phase One, the Event Hub, as we just talked about, is fully under construction next door. I understand by tomorrow, this whole lot will be cleared, the certain specific trees that we can save, we're going to save, but some we're going to remove and try to hold aside for later in the project possibly. But I do, I know there's, there's been, it's been brought to my attention that there is some chatter about some of the existing amenities in the city, most notably, is there going to be green space? Of course, there's going to be green space. The Event Hub has a huge, a huge portion of that site, when finished, will be green space. It will include an entire lawn area that will be seating for the amphitheater and for the farmer's market facility. In addition to that, there's been chatter about the ice, the, the hockey arena, which is going to be demolished, you know, again. We spent, yeah, unfortunately, we spent over a year's time, I think we had twelve-plus town hall meetings, countless community meetings, to arrive at the decision to move forward on our Elevate Oak Park initiative. The pool is another one, and I wanted to, I have a slide I'd like you to put up, if you could. And I want to speak up, there we go. And I'm going to hold this for just a moment. So, the pool was built, initially built in the late nineteen fifties. And if you really look at that as an asset, it has exceeded everyone's expectations in terms of its longevity. But I want to bring to everyone's attention that part of the issue with keeping the, the current pool in usage is that every single year, and you can see from my chart here, that before we...
Can you read it, because it's hard to see?
Yeah, I also have it up here, I'm looking there, too. But before we even opened the pool, over the course of the last five years, we have spent three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars before we've even opened the pool up to the public. One of the years, as you can see there, back in 2021, it took us a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in repairs and maintenance just to open the pool at all. And as we were going through the year-long planning for, you know, the new Community Center, which by the way, will also be built almost right on top of where the pool is, so we have to have it demolished, unfortunately, we didn't want to throw good money after bad, so to speak. So, every year, including the year we're in now, just to open it for this year, we're patching up, I mean, we just had a wall cave-in on the pool, we're trying to patch that up in time for people to be able to swim this summer. So, every year, we're having to piece this thing together with, you know, with gum and, you know, tape and everything we can find. So, that was one of the premises by which we did, you know, obviously didn't want to continue throwing that money down the hole. So, the, someone had mentioned to me that the pool, it would be five years before the Community Center is built. Well, we're looking to demolish the ice arena of the pool, the cable building, the tennis courts, which I've been here for thirteen years, I've, we've never used those tennis courts. The only time we've ever used them is for Juneteenth or other events, we've never actually used them for tennis. So, those will be coming down, and we're targeting late fall, or over the winter, to demolish all of those facilities, which gets back to, as I have at the bottom here, why we issued the ten million dollars prior to the full amount, because we wanted to make sure we had enough in hand, and that we weren't paying interest on the full amount while we were doing all the pre-development and demolition activities. So, unfortunately, we are slated to demolish those assets this year. We expect, I think, Dave, we're saying, construction on the Community Center is, not this year, obviously, but we look to do some of the foundation work by what, twenty-six, end of twenty-six, I think? A little later, yeah. So, no matter what, the most we'd ever get out of the pool is another season. And we'd have to build it in and work around it, I don't know how, it would add cost to the Community Center project, that's for sure. Is it impossible? No, nothing's impossible. But you're taking a risk, councilmembers, if you want to add another season to the pool, because for all I know, it's going to be another a hundred and seventy thousand off-season to get that thing started again. In that year, by the way, we had to pay for new equipment to go into the machine room and run the thing, and, I mean, it adds up. So, we could do it, but we're taking the risk. I mean, one, one way to look at it is we could attempt to, you know, talk to some of the contractors and architects about building it in, phasing it into the Communities Center project, and trying to squeak out one more season, and then if we get to this time next year and it costs too much, we just say we can't do it.
Yeah, it's how practical that is.
We could try it, that's, that's one alternative we could do. But, but again, I just wanted to reiterate, that goes against what we told our residents in all of those community meetings, and all of those visioning sessions, and all of those town hall meetings, when the number-one priority to our residents was an indoor year-round pool. So, we delivered that.
If we can phase it in and stay on...
Can you speak to the Chair, Madam Mayor?
Oh, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
If we can phase it in and not get behind schedule, that would be ideal. Obviously, the most important thing is to stay on schedule.
Yeah, and council members, I can come back to you. I, I don't, I don't think that's very likely, but I can certainly do my research and come back to you and deliver some information.
It seems unlikely, but if we can do it, yeah, it's worth looking at you.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I do have a question for City Manager Tungate.
Member Edgar?
So, I think that there's a group of residents who don't want the outdoor pool to close at all, not just, I don't think they're pushing for yet another season. I think they would like us to keep the pool, and it is sort of a money pit, we know that. My question is, is an indoor pool going to be any less expensive? And, you know what I mean, because we're going to run into some of those issues, maybe pools that are outdoor have, you know, are, have, you know, are exposed to the elements, maybe they have more problems. But I know we had a problem with the motor, and we had to get a new part, and it was very expensive. Pools are very expensive, period.
Yes.
And the demolition, they want to put off the demolition. I, I think that, you know, Dave DeCosta said it's going to happen this year, because we need to put up a community center. My, my feeling is, this is what residents told us they wanted, and if we can maintain a great indoor pool year-round, fantastic. So.
So, just if I could answer your question, the, the, I'm not a pool expert, but I know enough, haven't done this for so many years, to say that outdoor pools are way more expensive because they are exposed to the elements, and they're shut down for half the year. But a lot of the infrastructure over there, the original infrastructure is from the late 50s and 60s, so you're already dealing with dated infrastructure anyway.
Right.
But, you know, I just, I look at one example, the city of Southfield closed their outdoor pool and came to us so that their residents could get resident rates, and we struck that agree with, agreement with them a few years back. And that was primarily because they realized the cost for them for their outdoor pool. Now, an indoor pool, is it any less expensive? Yeah, slightly, probably, but pools are just expensive. But having it running year-round and constantly operating, obviously, we can address the needs and the concerns and issues as they arise more effectively than if it's running year-round. We'll be right there with our staff, obviously, as part of the community center project. But again, that was the top priority. Number two was an indoor track. When we did our surveys, number one was the indoor year-round pool.
Right.
Another thing to consider is climate change, and we're talking about the next, I don't know, 30, 40 years. Already, the pool was closed because it was too cold in June to swim, which is bizarre. My friend, the gardener, had to come in today because even though we weren't the highest wildfire smoke from Canada, there was significant. This is only going to continue and get worse, so air quality is not going to be wonderful. More storms and more severe storms as part of climate change as well, which makes it sensible to invest in an indoor pool. I adore the outdoor pool. I love it. I love the little splash pad and all the wonderful things about it, and there's a little part of me that's heartbroken, but it, it makes sense to, to have it indoors. And I know that the city of Troy has a wonderful indoor pool arrangement that is a lot of fun, all year-round, with no stops for air quality or, or storms.
And I, I just wanted to add that, please, you know, obviously, go, I think, Mayor, you said it best, but it goes without saying, I mean, of course, we value input from our residents, and, and we want to respect and honor as much as we possibly can, but the practicalities of the situation are what they are. I mean, it is just, you know, and we're not, the city of Troy's a 100,000 person, it's a much different situation here. So, the prospects of operating an indoor and outdoor pool are not possible.
Financially?
Just not financially possible.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to, just on the Elevate Oak Park stuff, so council members, you've also noticed that the Shepherd Park project is fully underway. The county has had their contractors out there working. I saw our staff out there moving some stuff today. Looks fantastic. I'm very much looking forward to that project coming online. As, also, just wanted to add, and I see Cheryl Weiss is here, so I wanted to say this while she's here, but the July 4th parade, we are continuing on with, but, you know, there's notable issues here, just logistically getting people around some of these construction sites. But we are going to pull it off, we're still going to have the Fun Fest and, and do that event, because we know how much it means to the community. Then, lastly, as I mentioned, I didn't mention this yet, but the Tyler Park project, we are going to be meeting with Berkeley School District now that the budget is approved. We know we can, we had a $700,000 allocation added into the budget for the Tyler Park project. So, for those residents who live near Tyler Park, Berkeley School District is going to be dumping a bunch of money into their portion of it, and we have $700,000 approved by City Council to dump in on our portion. So, we're going to be targeting a walkway, a paved walkway, the middle of the fields, we're going to be addressing some of the water runoff issues, some of the drainage issues, and then those ball diamonds. I know Berkeley Schools is going to make the one diamond there, varsity softball field on their side of it, the far closest to the building.
The one closest to, my goodness.
Yeah. And then on our end, we have the other diamond that we're going to be, at this stage at least, doing some minimal improvements to that as well. So, that's coming up too. I know the city of Berkeley's chomping at the, or the Berkeley School District is chomping at the bit, because obviously, they had their bonds approved a few years back, and you've probably have noticed, they're already doing projects, they've demolished all the properties across from the high school, and they're beginning on those, all those athletic facilities over there. So, we are meeting with them tomorrow to talk about that, that project. Are there any questions about the Elevate Oak Park projects, council members?
Madam Mayor, I do have a question.
Member Edgar?
So, for Tyler Park, I know we're going to, we're going to revive the diamond there, which kids still play on it, but I'm not sure why, it's just in terrible shape, but will there be some play equipment there? There isn't now, and there's an old swing set, I think.
Yeah, the, ultimately, if you look at the Elevate Oak Park plan for that park specifically, back when we had the Smith Group doing our consulting for us for that, there is a plan to bring in some, I think it's pretty minimal playground equipment, but there, and there's also plans to bring a shelter into that location as well. But I would say at this point, that's more of like a Phase 2 for us as opposed to this initial, because 700,000 isn't going to get us very far, so.
And what will be the next perk on the schedule?
I'd have to go back and look at our timeline. We're going to, I, I think, we wanted to make sure that, first, we had to get through the budget process, so we wanted to make sure the city council members were comfortable with our capital investment cycle. But the next thing that we're going to do beyond that is look at putting the trailways into each of the parks. And so, seven parks will have, including Tyler Park, will have those trails built into it. And we wanted to make sure that as part of that, that we did something in each park initially. So, that'll be our first thing. If we can get a contractor in to do that all at once in all seven parks, and by the way, the trail system was one of our other resident-driven top priorities for the Elevate Oak Park Initiative too. That was the one thing they all cited, they all wanted in the parks, was a paved trail system. So, that's the other thing we're going to be targeting. And then each of the parks, from that point forward, has their own cycle timeline, you know, as, as we can, as we get through the Event Hub and we continue to invest each and every year, you know, we're just, it's just a capital lifecycle, we're just going to be looking at taking out a park a year, just moving our way through them, so.
So, it'll be about seven years?
Yeah, I would say. I think it's a pretty good, a pretty good estimate. I, I think the good news for our residents is that, you know, I was just reading the other day, the city of Royal Oak has 52 city parks. It's geographically larger than us, but 52 city parks, you know, so the good news is we don't have that many, so our money goes a lot farther. And the other piece of good news is that we have a plan, a bona fide plan, to make those investments. So, no matter where you live in the city, at some point in the near future, you are going to see a bona fide investment, a capital investment, in the park that's closest to your home.
Nice. Great.
Fair, yes. Mayor Protem Whitehead?
Just one question about the 4th of July, since it was mentioned. Are we still doing the 5K?
We are not, no. We, we weren't able to do that because the, the Shepherd Park project, it cuts off part of the portion where the runners would have gone, and then the Event Hub project. So, that was the one thing. We are still doing the Fun Fest and the Pancake Breakfast, though. So, and the Pancake Breakfast will actually be indoors in the community center, so, yeah. So, at the end of the parade, you know how we normally go all the way down church to the end of Shepherd Park, and then we're going to be taking a left at Oak Park Boulevard right there, so we don't have people shuffling down to where the construction site is in Shepherd Park.
Any further questions?
Madam Mayor, members of council, that completes the city manager report for this evening. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Let's see, we have, call to the audience. Do you want to read the?
Each speaker's remarks are a matter of public record. The speaker alone is responsible for his or her comments, and the city of Oak Park does not, by permitting such remarks, support, endorse, or accept the content thereof as being true or accurate. Any person while being heard at a city council meeting may be called to order by the chair or any council member for failure to be germane to the business of the city, vulgarity or personal attacks on persons or institutions. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker.
Thank you. Anybody want to come and talk? Come on down.
Ken Sherman?
Oh, you've got cards. Ah, three cards. Thank you.
Good evening, Ken Sherman on Jerome Street, Oak Park. I actually started off with one item on my card, and I added two more for your discussions. My first thing is, as someone who started to use the facilities in Oak Park back in the 50s, I can appreciate where we're at now, but it reminds me, when you did the review of the money that you're sinking into the facilities over the last few years, it reminds me of the federal government spending money to reproduce pennies and nickels. They're spending more money than it would cost to, you know, for a penny or for a nickel, and that's why they're, you know, supposedly going to discontinue pennies and nickels in the future. My second item is traffic in Oak Park, you know, in light of the construction work of the freeway, work on 9 Mile, work on Greenfield, but it's further down on Greenfield, 12 and 13 Mile. I mean, it's impossible to get around in the city. I mean, it's like a snail pace, and it's only two months into the, you know, work on the freeway. I mean, I know it's like that in Berkeley, Huntington Woods, and all over, but I don't know what the city, if anything, can do to look at, you know, it's very frustrating to go from 10 Mile to 11 Mile. You just sit there for no reason at all, people move like an inch a second, and I can figure out like why they're not going anywhere, and I don't know if you've had any feedback from Public Safety or Public Works or from anybody, but that's one question I have. My third issue is regarding Bolinger Motors on 11 Mile in Oak Park, which came to Oak Park back in 2020. And a year or two ago, the city decided to issue a tax abatement to Bolinger Motors as you were beginning the process to Elevate Oak Park, and I was the only citizen who came up before you at the time that you had that hearing, and I objected to it because I said, here, we're trying to raise money to Elevate Oak Park, and you're asking the residents of the city of Oak Park to pay for bonds and whatever, but yet, you're not having businesses, you know, do the same, and you granted an abatement to Bolinger Motors a year or two ago. And in the May 19th edition of Crane, Oak Park-based EV startup lands in receivership, which is Bolinger Motors, which is in federal receivership. So, not saying that you had a crystal ball, but that just, to me, reinforces, why are we doing tax abatements, you know, to industries, especially now that we're trying to raise money for elevating Oak Park? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want me to comment on the traffic situation?
Traffic, sure.
I know, I know. What do you want me to do?
Is there one more?
Yes. Amy Yankus?
Thank you for allowing me to speak to you this evening. My family has been residents of Oak Park for 25 years, and I'm going to humor you for just a minute. I'm going to tell you a little bit about my background. I have many years in nonprofit management, including serving as a CEO of a very large organization, serving victims of abuse, both adults and children. But I'm here to address the outdoor pool situation, but it's seeming a little more bleak as the night goes on. My project management experience includes raising significant dollars for a badly-needed new shelter. In that case, demolition of our existing shelter was the only option as the building was actually condemned. We had big dreams for a new building. We sold the land, and instead of building new, we used the funds to purchase an existing building with a commercial kitchen, and we planned to add 16 all-inclusive family suites. Then the recession hit. The big three scaled back their contribution. Luckily, money from the county and a private donor allowed us to add the suites, but only 10, not 16. We knew we'd be turning families away, but we adapted. We were recognized at many levels for making lemonade out of lemons. Later, I oversaw projects to increase safety and security. Boy, did that money go fast. There was quite the need. We all love big and bright and exciting endeavors, and I stand here with great respect for all of you who have worked diligently to improve our community. When I first started at the agency, I was the volunteer coordinator. What was my biggest lesson learned? Why are we recruiting new volunteers if we're not maintaining, engaging, or retaining the ones that we have? So, let's talk about the pool. Honestly, I'm an educated person, and I found the ballot to be incredibly confusing. To me, it seemed like we were going to lose the outdoor pool regardless. I did not understand the language, and I take responsibility for not clarifying at an earlier date. But I have learned of a very, a petition by some very passionate people trying, trying to save our pool. I'd like to see, have the council consider beautifying and updating the best outdoor pool in the area. I'm also concerned about the astronomical costs of the new community center in these turbulent times. In addition, indoor pools are available at the YMCA, and LA Fitness, just to name a few, and LA Fitness is actually free to anybody receiving Medicare, and their pool is open from 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM. There is no outdoor pool within 30 miles that's accessible to our residents, and the entry fees are up to $20 per entry, per person. Residents of Pleasant Ridge and Huntington Woods enjoy this luxury exclusively for themselves. My understanding also is that Oak Park High School has not had a pool in quite some time years, and again, amplifying the divide between us-
Three minutes.
-and Berkeley.
Can you finish up?
Yeah, almost done. Us and Berkeley and Ferndale. So many possibilities. We are Oak Park, the family city, come one, come all. Neighbors love our pool, it's affordable, and some of us are feeling blindsided by this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Did you want to speak?
Cheryl Weiss?
Mm-hmm. Where, where was she at all the time?
Thank you so much, Mayor, City Council, and City Manager. Thank you for having this opportunity. I'm here about two issues, the pool and miniature golf. About the pool, I think a lot has already been said. I think the disconnect and I, perhaps, lack of transparency is that we didn't realize that we would be without a pool for a number of years. I think that's the misunderstanding we have, thinking it may be three to five years or even more. That's the issue. About the pool, all I'll say is I would like for you to think creatively. It sounds like the pool's going to be gone no matter what. I understand, I accept that, but maybe something can be worked out with other communities like Huntington Woods, like Pleasant Ridge. Maybe we can work a deal where we can use that, we have access to it. Let's think creatively. That's all I'm going to say about that. My main issue is miniature golf. I have been- is miniature golf. I have been talking individually to people about this for years, and nothing has happened, so that's why I'm here. We have been written up in Oakland County Moms as the only municipality to have our own miniature golf course. There are other communities building them. Cranbrook just built one. Novi, a private business, just built an indoor glow-in-the-dark mini golf. And in Ferndale, they had mini golf brought in from Oakland County this Memorial Day, and they are having it back for the June Fair, June 7th, I believe. So mini golf is trending in our area. We have it. We need to keep it. There is no reason, number one, it should have been connected to the pool. When I was growing up, and I've been a resident here 57 years, when I was a teenager, we all went and played mini golf, and that was the mini golf and the pool and the library and the hill and everything. That was our life. We don't use it because, number one, it is not advertised. I didn't see one mention in the summer brochure that we have mini golf. I want to tell you some stats. I put a poll in Oak Park Neighbors, which I created 11 years ago. And my question was, would you use our mini golf course in the park if it was not connected to the pool, knowing that the pool's going to be gone? 80% of people said either yes, or we have a mini golf course. 5% said no. And there was, I believe, 14% said if it was budget-friendly, sure. We have people that want it. They don't know we have it. That's a problem. It can be moved. It was moved once. It can be moved again. This is something no one else has. We have it. We are unique. That's one of our strengths. Let's keep it. Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect timing. Thank you. That's it? Anyone else feel like coming up? Okay. We will do call to the council. I just want to start by wishing everybody, all the fathers, uncles, neighbors, grandparents, cousins, friends, anybody who makes a difference in the life of a child, wishing you ahead of time, Happy Father's Day for June 15. There has been amazing, earned media. Earned media is when you get on the television and you haven't paid for an ad. And Oak Park has had four different events that have gotten media attention, which is just amazing. And one of them was the video on Ernie's Market. Here's Ernie, who started out at Ernie's Market when he was a kid in high school. He'd deliver for his mom and dad, deliver groceries on his bike, put them in his basket. So Ernie has been here forever, and nobody who comes is ever a stranger again, because Ernie loves your baby. And he is, we long ago made him the goodwill ambassador of the city of Oak Park, and he, a couple met in line at Ernie's and then got married. A woman went to Beaumont to have her baby, and on the way home, had to stop and show Ernie her baby. This is Community Squared. People who move away and come back to visit, come back for Ernie's. It's just an incredible human being in there, and it's nice. You get sandwiches, you get belonging, and you get unconditional love. This is his daughter, who is helping run the business now. His, her mom died recently. She was, there was, she always had a smile for everyone. It was just like coming home. And is there one more of Ernie's, or are we then into the next one? Oh, okay, so Kristiana Ford, from Channel 7, came to Oak Park for something else. And this was a guy named Delano Dalian, who Benny knew. They made music together. They rented studio space together. Now Delano Dalian has a studio in Oak Park on Greenfield. The basement area is the studio. And they got together with Oak Park Youth Assistance and Oak Park Schools. And when he was a young guy, the only way that you could get studio space would be to go to California or New York. And it was thousands of dollars. So now, he has a studio in Oak Park, and he is bringing Oak Park High School kids in to write and produce their music. And it's an amazing- Carla, also?
She helped organize it. She was her idea.
Oh, that's right. Okay. We have to give some claps to Carla Allen, who is our- who dreamed up so far my favorite youth assistance project. That one and the hairdos for the kids, that was adorable also. Just making a difference in the life of a teenager, which is such a hard time of life, making it better for them. And now, word is getting out about this, and a lot of kids are going to be interested in doing this. So they're thinking of putting, of trying to use it. A big problem in education is kids not coming to school and missing, like you build a foundation, and there's bricks missing in your foundation, and the building isn't steady. So if you miss a lot of school, it's very hard to do well. So they want to do, maybe, for the next group, require good attendance. So kids who want to make music are going to come to school and learn more because they want to be part of this program. Unbelievably fabulous situation. There is more, there are two more fun things that I could share with you, but we'd be here all night. I wanted to tell you, be there on Saturday on Nine Mile Road, because we are having this Saturday, from 1:00 to 4:00. I'm expecting your boys and your kids, yeah, and anybody's nieces and nephews. This is a free event for the whole family that is just fun on Nine Mile Road. There's face painting. There's touch a truck with public safety. Got to get up in that truck, and all those little guys that want to be truck drivers have a ball. There's scavenger hunts. There's magic shows. A dozen of our local businesses put out something wonderful, like Shear's Hardware last year had Make a Slime, and this year they have a whole new thing that they're putting out, and other businesses are putting out wonderful things, free things for the kids. And I had a four-year-old and an eight-year-old had a ball there last year. Please come, raffles, prizes, inflatables, free treats. This Saturday, June 7, from 1:00 to 4:00, be there or be square. And lastly, my husband was a history major from the University of Chicago, and he finished writing the book that he was on, and I thought, I've got a perfectly good historian sitting there with nothing to do. So I assigned him to research the history of the city of Oak Park. And he did a ton of research, and had the nerve to up and die on me before he was done. So we got Jack Lessenberry to help write up the research that he found, and it is published. And I have donated all of the thousand books to the library, the Oak Park Public Library. And I would give you a free copy, but I don't want to cheat the library out of its money. So please, go to the library and get a copy. If you want it autographed, Jack was kidding. He says you're going to lower the value of the book. So you can get them autographed. You can, in August, we're going to have a book talk with Jack coming and talking about the book. There'll also be sale there. But tomorrow morning, when the library opens, you can go, and for $29.95, you can get the history of Oak Park, and anybody would be glad to sign it for you. Thank you, and good night. Mayor Pro Tem Whitehead is going to tell us about Juneteenth.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think I got a slideshow tonight, too, actually. City Manager and Mayor had one.
All right. Available to all?
Yeah, so we had a wonderful barbecue in the park for Memorial Day. We did it last Friday. It was a great time. We gave out like over 70 hot dogs. We're going to keep these barbecues coming because it's important to, you know, have the community be present and gather. And there were some great questions asked and some great conversations that was happening. I do want to thank my wife who's in the picture there. She made all the food and brought her beautiful smile with her to welcome everybody. So I'm happy about that. And then it just was a great, we had state reps in the building. It was just a great time at the park. And it's all about, you know, community. So that's why we wanted to host it. We'll be doing another barbecue before the end of the year. The weather, as you can see, we had on winter coats. Don't expect that in May, but like Mayor said, the climate change thing is real. So, but we're hoping for better weather, though, for the next event, but that's going to be indoor.
Missed the kid.
Oh, yes. And then there's a senior active award that was given to Zakiya Holyfield, who's a really big staple in our community, and so deserved. That was given out by Oakland County to her. So well deserved. So she was there, and I wanted to get a picture with her with her award, because that was, she deserves a dozen of those. So Juneteenth, as Mayor mentioned, that's going to be on June 19, 2025, and that's at the Oak Park High School Auditorium. There'll be a Walk a Mile in My Shoes, which is our annual walk that will take place at 8:00 a.m. at the Oak Park High School track. And then there's also, the presentation is going to start at 4:00 p.m., and that goes until 9:00 p.m. There'll be where we do the music, the elected officials come out and speak. We'll have our essay competition winners present as well. And then there'll be some new things added into this year's program, because it is the fifth annual. We'll have a yard show, and then we'll have some other things with our Greek Divine Nai NPHC. That's being put together as well. So that was a thing that was heavily requested from last year. Mayor told me to bring back the guy stepping, so we're going to bring back the guy stepping. And then there's a concert. We've never done a concert, so there'll be a concert. We're back in the day. But before I yield the rest of my time, I do want to thank the city administration. This is a busy, busy time, and I guess this kind of ties off of my Juneteenth comments, but they go straight in from budgets to then doing State of the City, Juneteenth, and there's something else in the middle, Fourth of July as well. So hopefully after Fourth of July, they can breathe a little bit. But I've been speaking with Director Brittany and Benny and Deputy City Manager Adam, and there's just been so many. And City Manager has done so much work on this year's Juneteenth to get us to this point, and we believe that the fifth annual is going to be bigger and better than we've ever had. We thank Carla Allen, too, as well, who's helped us with Juneteenth over the years and given us a good platform. So we're looking forward to the best celebration in all of Oakland County.
And Mayor Pro Tem Whitehead is the one who brought Juneteenth to the city of Oak Park. You can give him a hand for that. Next, we have Councilmember Radner.
Well, good night, everyone.
Councilmember Edgar.
Hi, thank you for coming out. I wanted to note that this is the 10th anniversary of the Oak Park Easy Roll. And the founder of this ride, Aaron Tobin, is here, sitting here in chambers. And I've been on this ride a couple times. It's really fun. It is a great way to meet people. It's easygoing, as its name suggests, so you have time and energy to talk to people around you. I've met some interesting folks that way. And every Tuesday, they get roughly, they get between 125 and 200 riders. It's a huge crowd. And you get to, besides talking and meeting new people, you get to see some parts of Oak Park that maybe you haven't seen. And it's kind of interesting, and people are, you know, residents love it. They come out, they wave. And it's safe, because Aaron and his crew make sure that traffic stays out of the way of riders. And there is a Facebook page, the Oak Park Easy Roll Bike Rides Facebook page, which has the route printed every week. And there are more than 3,000 followers, so I guess that's an indication that it's a popular event. The first ride of the season is set for June 10. The ride leaves around 7:30 or so, 7-ish, okay. They say 6:30, but we'll say 6:30, unless the weather's terrible. So I just wanted to thank you, Aaron, for bringing this event to Oak Park. It really, it's popular, not just among our residents, but other people from other cities. They come far and wide to participate. So thank you. And I just wanted to say again that, you know, we need to keep pushing for safer gun laws. It is, it's a, an epidemic of violence. It is a public health threat. In Michigan, which isn't the worst state, people, you know, 1,400 people die from guns every year. It's very sad. So we're doing okay in Michigan, but we keep, we must keep pushing. This is an important fight. I also wanted to mention that next week is the State of the City address here, City Hall, on Tuesday? Tuesday? And our groundbreaking for the Event Hub next door will follow the event. Lots going on this year. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Crawford.
And I just wanted to mention with Juneteenth, this is my second year that I have been lucky enough to chair this event. It is a wonderful event, but I wanted to touch on one aspect. We're going to have our Wayne, our Wayne Mobile Health Unit there. And at this event, they will be doing high blood pressure screening. We all know that's a silent killer, COVID testing, behavioral health resources. So we want to, all of our residents to come out, take advantage of that, take advantage of the screenings. Very important that you keep your health monitored. And also, Happy Father's Day to all of the fathers, all of the mothers who are mothers and fathers. And everyone be safe.
Thank you. Tuesday, State of the City and groundbreaking. And if you come, after the council does their groundbreaking, you get to get the shovel, and they will take pictures of you or you and your family with the shovel. And you get to sign a list that you were here on this day, and it will go into our time capsule. So be a part of Oak Park history Tuesday. What time? Six?
Six.
Six o'clock.
The speeches are at 7, but the event starts at 6.
All right. Thank you. We are now going into closed session. You don't have to stay. I don't think there's anything exciting. Pursuant to Section 8 of the Open Meetings Act, convene- We need a motion to go into closed session to convene-
I'll make the motion.
-to discuss attorney-client privileged communication about pending litigation involving the city. We have a motion-
Second.
-and a second. Do we need a roll call?
Mayor McClellan?
Yes. Yes.
Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Whitehead?
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Okay, we need a motion to approve the minutes.
So...
Second.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meaning, a motion to approve the settlement recommendation in the case of Kara Wilson versus the city of Oak Park.
Second.
And then, roll call, do we need?
Roll call.
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Councilmember Radner?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Whitehead?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, and good night.
If you announce it, then it won't happen.